Welcome, everyone. Before we start the meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilwoman Weisman followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather together today to discuss city business. Thank you for the upcoming holiday season and allowing those of us to celebrate with our family members. Please be with everybody traveling this holiday season, and please be with all of those who are working this holiday season, whether it is the people at the city and the health departments, or anywhere else. Lord, thank you so much for allowing us to gather today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call to order the Monday, November 20, 2017 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Praether.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Weisman.
Here.
And I want to take an opportunity to welcome Mrs. Donaldson. It's your first time to get to sit up here with the City Council. We are so glad to have you.
Thank you.
And, of course, we're going to miss Mrs. Powell, who's still here in the room tonight, so thank you for all of your many, many years of service, and appreciate the wonderful job you've done with the city over the years. So, thank you, Mrs. Powell, and welcome, Mrs. Donaldson. Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Any opposed?
Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items, and our first item, A, is recognizing the Helius Lady Crusaders volleyball team as the 2017 state volleyball champions, and we are so excited to have all of you here this evening, so I would just ask if you would all want to come forward, and if you would like to come to the podium and just say your name one at a time, and then we'd love to have you all come up here and recognize you and get a picture. So, I don't know if we want to start with maybe the coach of the team, or the captain of your team, want to come up and tell us a little bit about your season this year, and what a fine job you all have done?
Come on up.
Come on up. We are so excited. We really appreciate you all being here, and so come on up to the podium and tell us a little bit about what's going on with the volleyball state champs.
Um, well, is this on?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm Reagan Brunz. I'm the captain of this year's team. As you know, we had a really successful season. I think we ended up thirty-four, four and two, so that's another year that we're thirty wins or more. We had a great group of girls. We worked hard every day. We came into practice, we gave it our all, and we had a great community supporting us. We had a great coach, and all of our parents and family and fans were really there behind us.
Well, that is wonderful, Reagan. Appreciate that. I know it takes a lot of skill to achieve the state championship level, and also teamwork, and it's really something that we're very proud of, and we want to recognize you and the entire team, and we're glad to have you here as well.
I'm David Harris. I'm the varsity volleyball coach. I've been coached at Helius for seventeen years, and this is our second state championship. Obviously, it takes a lot of talent to win a state championship, but there's a lot of intangibles involved also, like leadership and team chemistry, and I think we had those this year as well. And as well as they play on the court, they're even better people off the court. They're very good students. Last spring, they had a combined GPA of 3.9, and they're also outstanding in the community, too. They're involved in a lot of different activities at school and in the community. So, not only are they good volleyball players, they're just a lot of fun to be around, and I'm lucky to be their coach.
Well, thank you, Coach, and Reagan, and to the entire team. First of all, that GPA is very impressive, in addition to all of the skill that it takes to win state and do so well on the court, so that is fantastic. And I know here at the council, we do have some Helius grads, and then some that have children at Helius as well, so I don't know if council wants to say anything also for any congrats here? Well, let's all congratulate you. And if we could have the team, just to give the team some recognition, if all of the ladies would like to come up and just say your name in the microphone, and then we would love to kind of go around the room and shake your hand, and then we'll all end up here for a group picture, so you're welcome to come, and great job at the microphone tonight as well. Thank you.
I'm Riley Burnskyther.
Hannah Borshelt.
Brady Bearhorst.
Crystal Broner.
Jada Oldham.
Grace Millard.
Olivia Pharoah.
Kelsey Brester.
Megan Engelbrecht.
Callie Henson.
Erin Wyrich.
Corey Otto.
Ellie Rockers.
Bill Walters, assistant coach and freshman coach.
Well, fantastic. We are so proud of you, and congratulations again. And if you would all like to come here, we'll get a group picture of everybody, so come on up, and we'll do a picture together.
Everybody ready? One, two, three.
Hold on, hold on. Time out, time out.
Time in.
One to the lifetime.
Partnership opportunity.
Sorry, girl.
And I have to say, I love this. I feel like it's the paparazzi here, but you know what's so cute and awesome is the support out here from families and friends, and I think that is fantastic, so thank you all, because I know these girls, we are so proud. Jefferson City is proud of every single one of you. Thank you so much. All right, thank you. We are very, very proud, so great job, Helius Crusaders. We're proud of our volleyball state champions, so wonderful. And I always like to ask if we have any scouts? Do we have any scouts in the room today to recognize? Okay. All right, item four B, we have recognizing GIS department. Mr., we have Buster and Jill as our outstanding employees for November, and Mr. Croll is going to give us a presentation.
Thank you, and I will ask Buster Strage and Jill Brenner to come forward, and the director of the department, Margie Miller. Jill's not going to be here. Okay. So, congratulations to Buster Strage and Jill Brenner, GIS Division, City of Jefferson Finance and Information Technology Department, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for November 2017. This recognition is not only for the specific examples referenced in the nomination form, but also in recognition of all the service Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner provide to the citizens of the City of Jefferson on an ongoing basis. Some of the information from Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner's nomination include the following, and I'm going to edit this a little bit, but the full nomination is on our website, and I would encourage everyone to read that. Although the GIS Division likely has little interactions day to day with the public, they nevertheless provide services that are crucial to many of the departments within the city that do have such interaction. The city is fortunate to have two incredibly skilled professional employees. These employees have worked with multiple departments and helped those departments realize projects that needed to be accomplished. Recent examples of projects include, but are not limited to: Introducing new technology for inspectors to document code violations; assisted the city's emergency operations center during an ice storm event; to help street crews locate and pinpoint potential issues of safety; helped the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which we often refer to as CAMPO, to develop an online map to show future transportation projects in the region; assisted the finance department, or the fire department with inauguration safety preparations; assisted with various storm water-related projects; developed a sanitary sewer management work order management system; developed a Longview Cemetery Grave Lots Management System; provided information for special event planning; developed automation of sanitary sewer billing and rate analysis; assisted in development of a sidewalk management system; assisted the Public Works Department in developing an impervious area fee calculator; updated storm water symbology on Midmo GIS, which is the GIS website; and assisted various organizations which have had an impact on city services, and that was just last week's list, so. The GIS Division works with and assists numerous outside organizations, including Coal County CAMPO, the Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau, Lincoln University, Capital Region Healthy Schools, Healthy Communities, Central Missouri Community Action, and the Community Services Committee. The GIS Division works with county GIS staff to maintain the Midmo GIS website, which is available to the public, private sector companies, educational institution, and other agencies to obtain critical data for development and research purposes. The GIS staff continues to move forward by promoting more user-friendly and innovative technologies. The GIS Division has been exceedingly helpful, working with staff from different departments. Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner are very patient, particularly with those individuals with limited skills, as well as helpful to more GIS savvy employees. The GIS Division has been incredibly helpful with many of the departments that work with the public and other agencies as well. Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner are always willing to teach employees about the various capabilities of GIS, and how we can use it to do our jobs better. Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner represent the city in a positive manner, including at various conferences, such as the 2017 Missouri GIS Conference and the Missouri Mappers Association Conference. Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner enthusiastically develop and implement challenging goals and objectives, seeking input from users of GIS services to develop work plans and obtain feedback on how to improve their services and products. Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner have participated on numerous city-related committees and events. Mr. Strage and Ms. Brenner, significant contributions to the overall quality of the city, and quality of life within the city, are recognized and appreciated. So, congratulations and thanks to Buster Strage and Jill Brenner, GIS Division, City of Jefferson Finance and Information Technology Department, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Service Award for November 2017.
Congratulations, Buster, and pass along to Jill as well.
My wife, Rhonda, and my daughter, Kylie.
Well, thanks for being here, and we're so proud of Buster and Jill and all the work that they do for the city, so thank you.
We're very proud. I know it's so important, the technology piece is something that we don't have to deal with, but we use it every minute of the day, and it is so critical and so important, and the fact that you just really excel is helping our city, and it helps our citizens, too, so wonderful. Perfect timing.
And this is Jill.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, congratulations again, and thank you. Item five, public hearings. Item A, 1310 Edgewood Amendment to Final PUD Plan, and we have associated bill pending 2017-87.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a PUD plan amendment for property located at 1310 Edgewood Drive.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a piece of property that has an existing PUD plan tied to it. The existing use calls for a daycare. This bill would add one additional use, and that would be a boarding school for up to 12 children. Actually, it'd be more of a boarding facility. They will be attending local schools. The property is owned by Capital Region Medical Center. The agency that's going to be running the boarding schools is a nonprofit called Saint Nicholas Academy, and the property is located between Southwest and Stadium on Edgewood right there. To the south, mostly, is Capital Region property. It is more of a commercial office area. The zoning also kind of indicates that. It is PUD, and my mouse isn't working, but everything mostly on the left is PUD, and then overall on the right is that Commercial Office District. They would be, I said, attending local schools, up to 12 children. There's not going to really be any sort of changes to the exterior. That's not part of the plan, so they won't be able to do that, and it would actually probably ease some of the traffic, because you wouldn't have the rush for children in the mornings and the afternoons. I think that daycare may be licensed for up to 99 or 132 people. The Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval, and it was unanimous with both of them. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions before we open the public hearing of council? Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing for Bill 2017-87. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak on the bill? I know we do have some representatives here, and so if there are any questions, certainly.
I'd be happy to if you have questions.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak this evening? Okay, hearing done. We will close the public hearing portion, and we'll take up Bill 2017-87. Is there any council deliberation? And I do also want to take the time to thank the Huber family for taking this worthy project on, and appreciate you all being here as well. So, seeing no further deliberation, Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't need one.
Graham.
Hi.
Henry.
Hi.
Hussey.
Hi.
Kimna.
Hi.
Mahalovich.
Hi.
Praether.
Hi.
Schreiber.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Weisman.
Hi.
Fitzwater.
Hi.
Bill passes. Thank you. Item six, appointments by the mayor, and there are none this evening. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Item A, we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau Budget Presentation, and we will welcome Director Diane Gillespie from the CBB. Welcome, Diane.
Bring it down to my level. Good evening. Thank you for the invite. I am here tonight to propose our 2018 budget to you, and you should have it in front of you. I'm just going to kind of go over the comparison from 2017 to 2018 budget, but if there's anything that you would like to ask, please do not hesitate. Overall revenue that we are proposing is a 3.49 percent. Rooms tax is right at a 3 percent, and I will mention to you that on the co-op, the MDT PMF co-op, you will notice that there is quite a deduction in that. Missouri Division of Tourism had a $10 million withholding in their 2018 budget, therefore that affects the co-op program. So, if those funds do get rewarded back to Missouri Division of Tourism, we could get some additional funding, but that is a matching program, 50/50 between the CBB and MDT, so that was cut by 50 percent, so that has impacted us quite a bit on the advertising side. So, that number is down. Prison tour ticket sales were up 7 percent, is what we're proposing. MSP museum admission, we're doing an increase of 73 percent. That has gone crazy this year. You know, it goes back, location, 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 so we've had a successful turnout for that year, for this year. Jefferson City Promotion Items, 6.8 percent increase, so an overall increase of 3.49 percent in revenue. Any questions on that part? Payroll expenses, we do have a deduction. Several of you may know that we had some turnover in our office, so that was adjusted a little bit on salaries. We also have an employee that does a lot on MSP, promoting tours and that type of thing, and we have moved part of her salary over to the MSP's salary line. So, we do have a reduction in payroll of 3.57. Administrative and general expenses, 3.58 percent. And then you get into our marketing expenses, and we have been able to keep over 59, over, I'm sorry. Yeah, total marketing increase was a 9.8 percent increase over this year. So, our goal is to keep majority of our revenue going into marketing. So, overall, for 2018, we have been able to increase that to over a 50 percent of our revenue going into marketing. A lot of that money will go into sponsorships, and I firmly believe that if we can work with a group on bringing them to Jefferson City by even offering them some type of sponsorship, then that's a good return on our dollar, sometimes more instead of print or digital marketing. Some of our print advertising has reduced, but we've included that, increased it in the digital marketing side of it. We did have some reductions. You'll notice in the print at 21.89, but as I mentioned, we moved some of that into digital marketing. Sponsorships, we were able to increase 27 percent for this year. Some of our trade show fees, we were able to pay earlier, so that we were able to get a larger deduction, so that helped us on reducing those expenses. Special Events was reduced by 24 percent. We had added some additional funds in the 2017 budget for the Eclipse event, so since that's not happening again, we did not need to put budget for that. So, overall, marketing is a 9.8 percent. Any questions on the budget? Guys are kind of easy.
Well, Mrs. Gillespie, thank you for all you do, and please thank your entire staff at the CBB. You do a lot with a very small staff, and I know we have Councilman Mahalovich is the liaison to the CBB, and is very active in that role, and we appreciate what you do for our city, and it's very encouraging to see those numbers, and especially the increase in some of our tourist attractions. Councilman Mahalovich?
The question part of your presentation, your speech, you can be found to the council on the finance, it's not a hot topic here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the one thing that I think is always important to put out is that the tours of MSP proved to the state that we were worthy to accept that property without the work that was done by CBB primarily, and we would not have been in the position to accept that property or even make a good presentation like we did. It's also important to point out that the revenues are separated into the prison MSP tours, and that money is plowed back into the facility for improvements.
Correct.
And I think you had a figure, I won't hold you to the exact figure, about how much money has been put back in to that property?
Right, so we're right at about 150,000 have been put back into the property. We have a couple of projects that we are working on for 2017, along with the city, that I'm still trying to get bids on. I'm not sure it's going to get done this year, it may be the first of next year, but yes, we do have to, whatever net profit that we do make off those tours, go back into preservation of MSP.
We appreciate the partnership we have with the city and the CBB, so seeing no further questions. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And item B, we have Reverend Cassandra Gould here from Quinn Chapel regarding the reading room, and she may have some others also from Quinn Chapel. We look forward to learning about this reading room, and the wonderful lady that the room was named for, and how wonderful this is an asset to our community.
Yeah, I want, good evening, Mayor and council people. We are excited to have the opportunity to share with you, want to personally and publicly thank Mayor Turgon A. for just always being available to the community. I think that's really important. I mean, you can call her about the simplest thing, and sometimes she'll even just see it on Facebook and say, hey, is this something I can come to? And so, you set a really good example of what community leadership looks like, so thank you for that. Thank you for coming to Cut the Ribbon and to read the first book at the Dr. Carolyn Von Atkins Community Reading Room at Quinn Chapel. We were also grateful to see Councilman Henry and others there. We, Dr. Atkins passed about five years ago, September of 2012. She was a tenured professor at Lincoln University, and she also was a trailblazer in the community. She was the first woman and the first African American to be even on the board of the State Board of Parole and Probation, and actually chaired that board for about six years, sometimes in the eighties. Just a terrific woman, was a former warden at one of the state women's facilities, and a leader in our church, and someone that believed in education and certainly wanted to foster the love of reading and education into children who she came in contact with. She belonged to several book clubs, one of them, she was the founding person of the book club, and whenever I would visit her, she'd had an extensive library, and when she passed, she was actually writing a book. And so, we were thinking about how to better serve children. We had a children's room that our children frankly just kind of go in there on Sunday and put puzzles on the floor and that, and it wasn't, we didn't feel that was the highest use of the space. And so, we thought how wonderful it would be to create a community reading room. It is open to young people in the community. It has an emphasis on African American books and African American authors, although there are other books there. We now have the Christmas Story of Santa Claus in Jefferson City, thanks to the mayor, but we are extending an invitation to members of council to come and sign up for a time. We're doing like a celebrity reading, and you guys are our local celebrities, so come and sign up for a time to read to children. In December, it will be open on Saturdays, and going forward, it will be open on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and first and third Saturdays, but on December 18...
And item B, we have Reverend Cassandra Gould here from Quinn Chapel regarding the reading room, and she may have some others also from Quinn Chapel. We look forward to learning about this reading room and the wonderful lady that the room was named for and how wonderful this is an asset to our community.
Yeah, I want, good evening, Mayor and council people. We are excited to have the opportunity to share with you. Want to personally and publicly thank Mayor Turgon A. for just always being available to the community. I think that's really important. I mean, you can call her about the simplest thing, and sometimes she'll even just see it on Facebook and say, "Hey, is this something I can come to?" And so, you set a really good example of what community leadership looks like. So, thank you for that. Thank you for coming to Cut the Ribbon and to read the first book at the Dr. Carolyn Von Atkins Community Reading Room at Quinn Chapel. We were also grateful to see Councilman Henry and others there. Dr. Atkins passed about five years ago, September of 2012. She was a tenured professor at Lincoln University, and she also was a trailblazer in the community. She was the first woman and the first African American to be even on the board of the State Board of Parole and Probation and actually chaired that board for about six years, sometimes in the 80s. Just a terrific woman, was a former warden at one of the state women's facilities and a leader in our church, and someone that believed in education and certainly wanted to foster the love of reading and education into children who she came in contact with. She belonged to several book clubs. One of them, she was the founding person of the book club, and whenever I would visit her, she'd had an extensive library, and when she passed, she was actually writing a book. And so, we were thinking about how to better serve children. We had a children's room that our children frankly just kind of go in there on Sunday and put puzzles on the floor and that, and it wasn't, we didn't feel there was the highest use of the space. And so, we thought how wonderful it would be to create a community reading room. It is open to young people in the community. It has an emphasis on African American books and African American authors, although there are other books there. We now have the Christmas story of Santa Claus in Jefferson City, thanks to the mayor. But we are extending an invitation to members of council to come and sign up for a time. We're doing like a celebrity reading, and you guys are our local celebrities, so come and sign up for a time to read to children. In December, it will be open on Saturdays, and going forward, it will be open on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and first and third Saturdays. But on December 18th, we have a community dinner. It's our way of giving back to the community during the holidays, and we're encouraging members of the communities to bring their children. There'll be a toy giveaway there, and it would be great. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It would be great to have some council members there to read, and then at that time, you guys can sign up for dates in 2018 that you can come and just spend 15 minutes reading to children. And so, thank you again for the opportunity, and certainly always, we welcome donation of more books, but we're excited to open this up to the community so that children can come in and share the love of reading and learning that Dr. Atkins had.
We appreciate that. And what was the date on the 5 December event?
It is December, I said the 18th, but that's not true. It's Saturday, December 16th.
Saturday, the 16th?
Yeah, and I'll send, yeah, I'll send the flyer to you on email. But it starts at 5:00 p.m., but as I said, it's our, part of our giving back for the holidays, really targeting those families who may be in need and may not have all of the things that many of us have. So, they'll come and share a meal with us. Their children will get a toy, and it'd be great for them to also participate in having a story read to them, so.
Well, that is fantastic. And did you hear that? We are celebrities, so.
You are.
And I know Councilman Henry has already have been there and read, and I wanted to recognize Quinn Chapel too for a lot of things you've done in the community. For example, you collected things when the hurricane recently hit. You all helped to fill up a semi truck full of supplies, and that's just one of many things you've done to help the community. And I know a lot of you have heard Reverend Cassandra Gould preach. If you haven't, I encourage it. She's very inspiring. Appreciate what you do. And, you know, reading and literacy is so important, and in addition to that, it's just the partnership and being together with the children as they learn to read as well. So, I think it's wonderful. We appreciate you inviting the city council to come to the reading room. And we also have a gift from the city council. We have a book, the Little Book of Thanks, and this book will make lives brighter and hearts lighter, inspiring words of gratitude as a way to acknowledge those who make a difference. And what you are doing really makes a difference.
Thank you.
So, all the council has signed it for you.
Thank you.
And if we could, we'll have council come back here, and we'd love to get a picture because, like you said, we'll post and share what you're doing there with your reading room. So, thank you, Reverend Cassandra.
Thank you. Plus, I like a mayor who likes to take pictures and post them on social media.
All right. And item C, we have Lieutenant Christopher White from the Salvation Army regarding the Red Kettle Campaign that you just kicked off at Capitol Mall on Saturday. Welcome.
I promise I'm only going to do this once. So, what do you think of when you hear that bell? Maybe you think, is there another way out of this door so I don't have to go back the way I just came in? Maybe you think, how early did bell ringing start this year? Or maybe you think, don't they know that I just gave a Walmart yesterday? Now, I wouldn't blame you if you thought these things. However, perhaps instead, you could think of the 11,000 bed nights we had in our shelter just last year, or maybe the 25,000 meals that we serve through our community meal program, or maybe the 14,000 people that we serve through our food pantry in Jefferson City. And tonight, the mayor invited me to remind the council and the city of Jefferson of our most important annual fundraiser, the Red Kettle Campaign, and to encourage each of you.
And you.
And the people through that thing up there, to consider being a volunteer bell ringer. You just have to call us at the Salvation Army to sign up. Now, I don't have favorite council members. However, Carlos Graham is already signed up this year, not just through Blue Tiger Tuesday on November 28th with Lincoln, but also our Lions Ring Day on December 8th. And not that I have a favorite city employee, I do like Steve, but Dana Schofield just gave me a call today. I don't know if Matt knows this, but he has signed up to ring at Hy-Vee as well with his family. And our goal this year is $270,000. And every dollar that we raise through that campaign helps to fund the many programs that we have, and those are just a few that we're known for our shelter and our food programs. But it funds all of our programs at Christmas and throughout the whole year, and those funds stay right here in Jefferson City. So, I appreciate you inviting me down to remind the city and the council. If you haven't heard the bells, if you haven't shopped a Hy-Vee in the last three weeks, if you go to Walmart after Black Friday, you're going to hear the bells. And when you do, just think of the many programs that the Salvation Army has here in town, and that by donating a dime, a dollar, $50, $150 check, we'll take anything, gold coins, that, don't just think of the kettle, but think of the many people that you help through donating to the Salvation Army this Christmas time. So, I thank you for allowing me to be here to ring the bell. I'm not going to ring again, but thank you. Any questions that you have for me or the Salvation Army?
Any questions? Councilman Hesse?
How do we sign up if we want to sign up?
Sure. So, you can go online, just search Jefferson City Salvation Army, or just call us, 573-635-1975. Many people call us every day, so many people know the phone number, 573-635-1975. And we can find just about any day, any time, any place that you want to go. We're at 16 sites here in town. And for those places that don't have the bell outside, we do have counter kettles now in 17 stores, restaurants, different places here in town. So, think of giving that way, too.
Well, thank you for what Salvation Army does for our citizens to help our community, and it was a great kickoff at Capitol Mall. I know Sheriff Wheeler was there and Bernie Feckel, and he mentioned how that sound of the bells is the sound of hope and how many families really rely on that. So, again, thank you, and we hope that we can help with the Red Kettle Campaign. And why don't you bring that bell up here, and let's get a picture of council and share, we're going to share what you're doing. I tried to push him over. All right. Item D, we have Jane Beadham, Tony Smith, and Jenny Smith regarding the school street presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. We're going to rearrange this just a little bit and have Wyn Harrison speak instead of Jenny Smith. So, we'll start with Wyn.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wyn Harrison. I'm born and raised in Jefferson City. I've seen a lot of improvements, and I've seen a lot of stuff disappear, too. And it should be clear by now that there's quite an interest in this said School Street Lafayette area as possibly an historic neighborhood. If not that, at least, we'd like to maintain what's there. I wish I'd written it down, but a close acquaintance of mine, Dr. TD Polly, who recently died, gave me a complete rundown on all the people who had lived in this neighborhood. And one of them was my first grade gym teacher, and it goes back that far. Other, the one property that we bought, we bought from the, both of them we bought from the families that have been there for years. One family, the executor is now 83 years old. She was born and raised in this particular house. But I think if you would do an historical search, you'd see that it's an area that has been there for a long time, and we would not like to see it go. Ted Heron, back in the 60s, had money, all he needed, but it was for demolition. But he told me one day that his biggest, his priority was living conditions, and that's why they tore these places down rather than rehab them. Living conditions is not an issue right now. We would like to see this area rehabbed. We would like to see some of these properties that are not available to be made available. Capitol Avenue has been made a really desirable district, but this is not quite the neighborhood. But nonetheless, it's an old neighborhood, and it's part of Jefferson City, and we'd like to see it hang around. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think we need the timer for invited guests, correct? So, we don't have to worry about that at the moment. All right. Thank you. And welcome.
Madam Mayor and council members, I'm Tony Smith. I live at 1211 El Marine. My wife, Jenny, and I own properties at 612 and 614 McCarty. With Jane Beadham and Kathy Bordenor, we have prepared an application for a local historic district in the School Street neighborhood, and we're collecting property owner's signatures from the 20 owners listed in the proposed district. The city provided an application for us recently, and we have collected more than half of the signatures required for approval. The city of Jefferson is also an owner in this proposed district, and you, the city, support applications of historic districts. The process is part of the East Side Master Plan that the city is following. But, on the other hand, it seems like the city is trying to dismantle some of this historic neighborhood, one house at a time. The city has plans to demolish right now five properties in the School Street area, but why not offer these houses on the market over a set period of time to recoup the investment and return them to the tax rolls? On average, you might receive $20,000 per house. Now, you have $75,000 in 408 Lafayette. You have $25,000 in the other four houses. Demolition costs will cost taxpayers at least $50,000 minimum. By pursuing a demolition plan for these houses, you're trading income for debt. Collectively, there's over 1 million in assessed value for the houses in this neighborhood. Levy debt, 5.77 percent. That's $57,000 of yearly tax revenue. Presently, the city is making the 2005 Central East Side Neighborhood Plan the guideline. That plan is simply out of date. I took a closer look at the document this week. The demographics in that plan have changed greatly in the last 12 years. The plan talks about a growing state government and a steady influx of new residents to the city. But today, the projected growth of Jefferson City is said by some to be little more than 1 percent over the next 10 years. State government's greatly retracted. Much of the workforce is living in surrounding communities. The Central East Side Plan calls for open spaces along Miller Street to provide a buffer to the expressway. It calls for an open space area from the National Cemetery to the MSP redevelopment area. It envisions, and I quote, "a vibrant retail district in the 400 to 600 blocks of East McCarty." That's in Section 3-7. That's our area, the area that we're talking about right now. The East Side Plan proposes a lot of things, and many of these are not being promoted currently. The city needs to reassess the East Side Plan, I think, to reflect the economic realities of today. In the last 12 years, floodplain issues have greatly been impacted by FEMA's budget issues. And instead of following outdated goals that may not fit today's economics and politics, we'd ask you to update the plan before you go too far out. We pay our city taxes. We pay higher flood rates. We try to be good citizens, and if flooded tomorrow, there's no federal bailout for us. We inflict little cost to the city, but there is a cost to the city for demolition of the houses in this area, which removes them from the tax base. The current atmosphere and plans cause uncertainty and a loss of value to the property owners. The creation of a local historic district could foster investment confidence, inspire neighborhood pride, and further revitalize this neighborhood in which there's so much potential.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, for staying with us as we find our way through the process to this point. As the first potential local historic district established through the regular process outlined in city ordinances, this has been a bit of a trailblazing effort, which we hope might allow others to follow the same path. Recently, we held a meeting with some of the neighborhood property owners, several of you council members and staff and local media. At that meeting, several owners agreed to accept the draft design guidelines that we had shared with them for review about a week earlier. Since then, additional owners have agreed to place their properties under the guidelines, and a couple more are interested but have not yet connected with a notary. No one that has been approached has been opposed to the idea of the historic district. The ordinance requires 75 percent of the property owners to approve formation of a local historic district by having their signatures notarized. We have signatures from about half of the required owners of the property district, proposed district, and a couple more are interested but have not yet had their signatures notarized. But many of the remaining properties at this point are rentals, so we must work to track down the owners and get them in front of a notary so we can obtain their signature as required by the ordinance. With only 20 owners in the proposed district, each one is important to us. One house, for example, recently sold, and until closing, we won't know who the new owner is. Another is listed by a company whose registered agent is recently deceased, so the only way we have of contacting them is by mail. And a third house is owned by an estate managed by an out-of-state owner. These types of situations complicate the process of getting notarized signatures. It would probably be easier to change the zoning of the neighborhood than to establish a local historic district. So, we're working toward getting the required number of owner's signatures. It seems like this has been going on for some time, but I remind you that the decision not to rehabilitate the house at 408 Lafayette was made around 2012 or five years ago. So, we asked for an extension on the moratorium on demolition of the city-owned structures in this neighborhood for another 60 days while we work to obtain more signatures. We've already put together the information except for the signatures that we would need for the application and submitted that to you all some time ago and to staff. If we stay on this path, once we have sufficient signatures, we will formally submit the full application with the signatures with the history and draft design guidelines submitted recently for review by staff, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the full council. Or, we could change paths and consider changing to a neighborhood conservation district, like was used on Capitol Avenue. That wouldn't require notarized signatures, just a public hearing, approval by planning and zoning, and by the council. This is a strategy we'd like to work with staff on, as it might be a faster approach to completing this project. Thank you for your patience on this issue. Questions?
Thank you. Councilman Prather?
Are you aware that there are any potential buyers for these properties?
They've not been placed on the market, to my knowledge.
But are you aware of anybody that might be enter us, that I guess is the question?
No one has told me I want to buy that house. No, but I'm not a real estate agent, so.
I was just curious if anybody has spoken interest because of the nature of the homes.
Well, there was one recently that sold, as I just said, that, you know, didn't stay on the market very long. It was a foreclosure.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman Henry?
Did he looked at putting that house on the market? 408 Lafayette?
No, but that is an option to be explored.
I'd like to make a motion to give direction to city staff to look at putting that house on the market and see if we can get it sold, see if the city can get it sold 60 days.
Okay, there's a motion on the table?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I want to make sure Mrs. Donaldson got that motion. Do you need anything restated there?
Probably.
The motion is actually giving the city staff direction to put the 408 Lafayette home on the market, and we'll give the city staff 60 days to see if we can get it sold.
And we have a motion and second, and Councilman Prather. Now, we're in the discussion phase.
Was the intention also there to keep the stay on for 60 days for the other properties too, or?
I'm not thinking about that at this point. I'm thinking about seeing if the city can get the household. But I mean, in the meantime, if that's there, that's there.
It might impact your sale prospects. If people don't know if the house next door is going to stay or go, it would make it a little more risky perhaps to invest in a property. little more risky perhaps to invest in a property.
Councilman Graham?
What is the conditions of the 408 house?
I've never been in any of the houses, so I don't know.
Mr. Sanders?
408, back with our previous property inspector, declared that house dangerous. I've only seen a few pictures in there. It looks like it would need extensive renovation. Jamie Abbott, I don't know if she's been in there, but she may have more information on that.
Mrs. Abbott?
We do have interior photos for 408 Lafayette, 410 Lafayette, and 623 School Street, just for those properties. As Sunny mentioned, Dan Davis, our previous housing inspector, declared the property dangerous back in 2009, citing that it would cost more than $50,000 to rehab the structure to bring back to habitable standards. The property, I honestly have only been in there one time and would require major rehab. It does currently have a newer roof on it that was placed in 2012.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Prather?
This is probably a question for Sunny. Would we be able to put some of the other properties up for sale too? Since we're going for this one, maybe add the other ones in it also? Or is that overstepping our boundaries because they belong to the parks, or... Could you speak on that?
408, I believe, accessing the city assessor's website, county assessor's website, is the only one that's actually titled in the Jefferson City name. The other one has references to parks or Parks Commission or whatever like that. So I'm not sure, Mr. Mulman might be able to clarify exactly for sure what authority the council has to sell those. I'm not sure on that. But we could.
Sales of parks property have to be approved by both the Parks Commission and the city council.
So basically, you're saying is we can't make that decision tonight on the other properties, just the one at 408. That's what it sounds like. I mean, I'd like to go ahead and move on with the other properties and give our blessing. If the parks, should they want to sell it, sell it.
I think that would be like, you could certainly make a motion.
I would make an amendment for that.
Send in something to parks and have them consider it.
Yes, I'd make an amendment to send those to the parks, that they have our blessing. If they want to sell them, to go ahead and put them on the market.
So do we need a second for that amendment to amend the motion? Is that correct, Mr. Mulman?
I'll second that.
Or do we have the maker amend his motion?
For sake of clarity, it may work better as two separate motions, but...
Two separate motions, okay.
That is certainly the pleasure of the council.
So what you're saying is go ahead and vote on this current motion on the table and then take up Councilman Prather's motion next?
For clarity, that would be probably better.
Okay, so we'll do two motions. We have the one on the table, the motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
I guess this question would be for Ryan. Based on the comments that Sunny and Jamie made, what kind of risk does a city take if we're marketing property that they claim needs major renovation? I mean, is it an as-is sale, or how do you indicate in the sales documents to make sure that a potential buyer is aware of the problems?
We would probably do a form of seller's disclosure that gives a full and honest description of all the issues with the house that the city has encountered and disclose as much as possible. It would be an extensive disclosure to make sure that anything that we have been made aware of in our ownership period, that we're disclosing to the property. But essentially, when the sale will go on, it would be done as an as-is type sale.
Would that require then the inspectors going back in there and updating that 2009 walkthrough?
I'd say that's probably a really good idea.
If I could add just a suggestion or a clarification, Jamie mentioned the cost to rehab, and I know that the roof on 408 Lafayette cost the city about $25,000. I personally have a house that's almost identical, and our roof cost about $10,000. So it is more costly as a government entity to hire contractors than it would be to a private property owner. So I just wouldn't want you to scare off buyers by including those without stating this would be for the city rehabbing it, not a private owner. Something to that effect.
Correct, but we've dealt with stormwater issues where folks were told us that they were not aware of problems to the property. So I just want to make sure that the city is protected if there are problems to the property. I was much interested in the cost, but I would want a future buyer to know that there's significant problems if there's significant problems.
So maybe that's something Mr. Mulman would make sure the city's protected.
Yeah. If I may, in making that type of disclosure, I don't think we would attempt to put a value or cost to how much to fix it, just hear the issues, be aware of it, and then if there was any type of inspection process on the buyer's end, which I hope there would be, that they investigate that and make their own determinations on cost and financial feasibility of the transaction.
Okay. Councilman Graham?
Do you have an appraisal amount for 408?
The appraisal that was completed back in 2009, property was purchased at approximately $54,000 at that time. And if I may add, if the city was to sell, we would be required to obtain another appraisal and disposal because federal funds were included on that property. So there would be guidelines that we would have to follow for disposition.
Would there be federal funds to return back?
Awesome. Well, we would need to remove all federal dollars associated, which is approximately 78, close to $80,000 after you add in the appraisal cost for the future. So the fair market value, or the house was purchased at $54,000. Roof cost approximately $20,000. And then there was asbestos and lead testing that was done on the property amongst some other incidental items that were completed. So we're in, all in, for approximately $78,000.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Questions or comments? Councilman Prather?
I'm waiting for the next one.
Okay. Anything further? Councilwoman Ward?
Now, would we, we would sell it, I mean, the city would. And we would sell it with the stipulation of as-is. And it would be the buyer that would get their own inspections, correct? So we wouldn't be liable if we're selling something as-is.
Right, right. So essentially, what you would need to do is disclose as much as is known. Right, exactly. And then it would be up to the buyer to conduct an inspection and then make a determination of, you know, what needs to be done, you know, to make the purchase make sense for them. So by introducing the buyer's inspection and then disclosing as much as we know about the property, that ameliorates any type of liability that we could have for latent defects.
Councilman Hesse?
Ryan or Sunny, hypothetically, the property were to sell within forty days, new buyer takes ownership, historic district stalls, doesn't get completed, new buyer, private individual could essentially come in and seek to demolish this property, correct?
I would believe that's correct.
Okay. And if the demolition ordinance that's been discussed at P&amp;Z and HPC lately that went through planning and, or Public Works Committee, hasn't been approved by the council, so it would not fall under sort of the new, I don't know how old this property is, depending on the year that's picked...
It's more than fifty years.
But at this point in time, that threshold is talked about being 100 or 75 years, but I guess there's the risk that's taken that some of these sort of decisions are on different tracks and they don't all sync up. And so I just want to be clear that we could have a scenario where we're happy the property's been sold, the city no longer owns it, however, that private individual could desire to demolish it and do something different with that site, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I'm just trying to, because I feel like from Ms. Beadham and her group, there's the push to save the property and keep it as-is. And so our action, but at the same time, sort of get the city out of the property so that something can be done. But I just, my mind goes to the multiple scenarios that could take place. An outcome here, a potential outcome, is private ownership, but the property being demolished. Just, I'm not saying that should dictate how we vote on that, it's just for my sake to know that that is a potential outcome.
Councilman Prather?
To follow up on Councilman Hesse's point, I guess we could add that along with this is a stay for sixty days, just along with trying to sell it.
What...
Councilman Hesse?
And I think we could get there, the stay, but the issue is that stay could expire in sixty days, or the property sells and it's somebody else's property now. We can't dictate then through council action to specifically say whether or not they can do something if they're meeting all the requirements that are in place already, given our current ordinances and structure.
Councilman Prather?
And Sunny could probably speak to this too. It looks like, well, in the sixty days, and I'm not sure if Jamie might be able to speak to this too, which, at what time do we have to give our okay for those federal funds to be used for demolition? When's the drop dead date?
The state has not given us a drop dead date yet, but they did say by the end of the year. And I believe Jamie's been told they're going to try and get us that drop dead date by the end of November.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fitzwater?
I guess I'm not sure who to direct this comment to or question to, but we've been talking about this project for a while. We've got a lot of unknowns. Is there a need that this has to be made tonight, or could we have at the next council meeting and pull some of these questions together before we're asked to make a decision? I mean, I think there's a lot of interest trying to resolve this issue, but there's been a lot of legitimate questions raised. I think Councilman Hesse raised a legitimate question. Is it possible to research and bring this back in a little bit more organized motion?
Councilman Henry?
And with all due respect, Councilman Fitzwater, my only thing to that is, that question won't go away anyway. Because we won't vote on that until, I think, the 18th of, I think we don't even come, that doesn't even get introduced to us till, like, the 18th of December, the demolition ordinance itself. So that question is always going to remain regardless. So I guess the question would be, how long do you want to wait? How long do you want to sit on that?
Well, in the motion on the table directs staff to look into selling it, so, you know, perhaps that is something that, along with that, it sounds like there are a few other questions, you know, that may have staff working on it as well, but at least it gives staff some direction on how to move forward. But there are, Councilman Hesse?
Well, just a question for Sunny or Ryan then. And I can't remember when we sold Fire Station Three. I'm trying to think of the time that I've been involved in the council with the sale of property. Does staff come back to us to sort of get the okay on a asking price, or is that something that we just push to you to say fair market value?
I think the appropriate process is for us to put it on the market for a marketable amount, something that's going to draw interest, receive offers, and then once offers come in, bring that to the park, sorry, this is Lafayette, bring that back to the commission for approval of a particular number. If the council were desirous to set, say, a floor, don't sell for less than this, that's something that they could set, but I would highly encourage set that in closed session as not to affect the sales price. So there's a couple of different ways you could do it, but under the direction of the current motion, we would just put it out for what we think would be a marketable price due to interest, to interest offers.
Councilman Prather?
Hypothetically, if we sold one of these properties, the city had it up for sale, and we had several buyers, could we not choose a buyer that, for instance, would make it known that they're going to tear it down?
Um...
Would the buyer have to disclose it?
Generally, when selling property of this type in a market situation, cities are required to receive fair market value for the property. Now, there's a lot of things that go into fair market value other than just price. And so that's a tough question. It kind of depends on... I really'd have to take a look into that and see if there's any type of guidance on that without giving you a really good answer. My inclination is that that's probably something that we shouldn't be doing, is restricting the property like that, but I wouldn't want to give a final answer on that without further study.
Follow-up?
Ultimately, it will come back to the council if we sell something anyway. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Henry?
But, you know, in the same vein, Councilman Prather, I'm not sure how comfortable I am selling something as-is and then saying, "You can't do what you want to..." You know what I mean? Well, kind of sort of, kind of sort of, that's kind of where you're going with that. But I don't know how comfortable I would be if we disclosed, "Look, we're selling this property as-is, but we would like for you to do this."
We've done similar things before, and this was on Borough Street, I think. We had, it was actually a little bit different. There was a sale of property that we said they can't build on, so we sold a contingent on them not building on it. We did that a few years ago, and it was supposed to be green space.
Any further questions, comments on the motion? Okay, roll call please. Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilman Prather?
I move that we give our blessing to sell the other properties that are mentioned. And I believe they're all on this sheet.
Yes, sir, but may I make a comment regarding one of those properties?
Sure, before I say the motion.
I just want you to be aware that one of those properties on McCarty Street was given to the city with the understanding it would be demolished for a green space. That is 606 McCarty.
To the city or to the parks?
To the parks, so...
Okay, so if I went ahead and made the motion, and they so determine that they don't want to do that, they could so determine that they don't want to do that? Okay. So my motion still stands, is that we give our blessing to sell those properties provided that's what the Parks and Rec Commission decide to do. And was it sixty days, the next sixty days?
If, I ask for, just sake of clarity, that we have a reading of the property addresses?
Okay, that would be 602 East McCarty, 606 East McCarty, 623 School Street, 410 Lafayette. Is that it?
408.
408, we already did.
408.
Okay, so that would be included in my motion if there is a second.
Thank you.
We have a second by Councilman Schreiber. Any further discussion? Councilman Hesse?
I think the difference, you put the sixty day, so the difference would be is that our action tonight sets the wheels in motion. I don't believe the next Parks Commission meeting is scheduled until the second Tuesday of December. And so, just an FYI, that Part II of this would not get taken into effect. So you're losing a couple weeks' time. I don't know if sixty's appropriate. I don't, it seems like 408 kind of has a more interest on that time thing because of the federal dollars.
Can you say sixty days after the next Parks Commission meeting? Is that a possibility?
I guess the rationale might be, I mean, we've been privy to these conversations. You know, we're going to need to probably provide some rationale for sixty days to the Parks Commission so they have an understanding as to why they're such...
I would either accept that amendment or part of my motion, succeeding is from the Parks Commission's meeting, if my second so wishes to do so.
Mr. Kroll?
So, why do we...
We need a sixty-day timeframe.
If we just go ahead and start the process for sale for 408 and the other properties through parks, then... through parks, then?
It does what it does, I'm not sure what.
Well, we kind of want to tie these properties up just a little bit more, so that they aren't, we don't go through with the demolition at this time, that we are actually trying to sell them.
Well, if you have direction from council to start the sales, the process of selling them, I don't think we would, I can tell you, I wouldn't authorize the demolition based on that, so I don't know that we need a timeframe. We will obviously use, you know, expedite as much as we can, there is a process, two different processes for the different properties, so it's fine to have one, it just seems like it complicates things.
Well, I just wanted a timeframe, so that we kind of come back to address this again at a specific time, instead of coming back here in June, or whenever.
Yeah, we'd put the properties up for sale. I think on the parks one, parks has to make a recommendation, a decision, and then it still has to come to council.
I think what the ordinance says is that the, is that the council can approve that on its consent agenda, so I believe that it would need to come back. When the ordinance specifies a form, I think it's best practice to follow the form. So I would put that back on the council agenda after parks has made, well, yeah, after the parks has made its recommendation, so it may be, maybe December 16, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know about the timing there, but we would do what we need to do, get, I don't know what all the process part would be as far as the information that we have, and go ahead and advertise, and go through that process, and give 30 days, 60 days for a comm, I mean, so it, you know, it, I think it may take a little bit longer than 60 days, but what's, I get the urgency, I just don't know that there's a 60-day timeframe that does anything from a sales point of view.
I'm not sold on that, so.
Any further discussion?
I'd say if the council wishes, I'd, you know, I could remove the 60 day and not put a time period.
Any direction on that from council? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and second. Are we ready to?
Okay.
Could you restate the motion for us, Mrs. Donaldson?
The motion?
I'm sorry. Before you read the motion, I would like to eliminate the 60-day time period, if that's okay with the second or?
All right.
But expedite the process.
The motion is to put the following properties up for sale, 602 McCarty, 606 McCarty, 623 School Street, and 410 Lafayette.
Okay, so that's the motion, and? What are you thinking?
I just have a question.
Mr. Councilman Graham?
But from what I'm reading, 606 was donated in 2016, with the understanding the property would be demolished. So how can we recommend to sell something that was donated with that understanding? Please help me to understand.
That's, that's why I said that it'd be up to the commission to decide, because it's actually given to them. Someone else already brought that up earlier, and that's why I said that it's up to the commission, not up to us, but we give them our okay if they want to go ahead and sell them.
Councilman, you'd also need to find out if that was a verbal agreement, or if there's a restriction on the property.
Yeah, I would just like to leave 606 out for right now. If not, I'm voting no.
Mr. Kroll?
I think all of the properties, we really aren't to the point where we, the city, can sell, right? We have to get those to, Ryan, to the Parks Commission. So really, wouldn't the motion be to forward that suggestion request to the council, to the Parks Commission, to consider, have them consider the sale, one of which would entail the discussion that you just had about the property for the donation piece? And then, I think, tell me if I'm wrong, some recommendation would come back to the city council, perhaps as a consent agenda item for those properties, whatever that recommendation may be.
I think that's a fair characterization of the process. Whatever happens tonight, it needs to go to the Parks Commission, it needs to come back here.
But the motion can't be for the city to sell those properties, because we have to get the parks, we can initiate the process, but the direction to sell is probably not quite there yet.
Mr. Mollman, is a, is a motion and second required, or is a motion required to go to parks to verbalize this, or is this something that, do you feel that we need? Can you give them our direction, since it's up to them?
I would like a motion.
Yeah, the, it certainly sends a certain message to the Parks Commission, that the council, a majority of the council desires them to take up this issue. So I think, I think it appropriately focuses their attention on the issue at hand.
And with 606 being donated, do we need to amend our motion to reflect that?
I think that that is something that will need to be studied on the donation, if there were any restrictions on that, and that, something that would be presented both to the Parks Commission, when they make their decision, and then also back to the council as well, so that way, full information is in front of both bodies before approving an actual sale.
So is that just a given, or do we need it in the motion?
I would not, I will, would not, I don't think it needs to be in the motion, it's just, it's basically, look into this, these issues.
Make sure we alleviate Councilman Graham's concern.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
So at this point, we need, don't need, we can rescind our request for the 60-day moratorium to be extended, is that correct? Mr. Kroll's indicated that you're not going to sell something and demolish it at the same time, so, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. We have our committee meetings and schedule on JeffersonCityMo.gov, and I will start with my announcements this evening. This Wednesday is the annual Chamber Prayer Breakfast. Looking forward to that annual event. Also, the mayor's Christmas tree lighting is Thursday, November 30, and it is the 12th Annual Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting. Salvation Army will be on hand to collect unwrapped toys and non-perishable food items. Helius Catholic High School Choir will perform, and we will have additional entertainment. The entertainment begins at 5:30, and then the actual tree lighting is at 6:30, and that again is Thursday, November 30, at Rotary Centennial Park on Bolivar Street. The next night is Living Windows, which is Friday, December 1, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the downtown. And Saturday, December 2, is the Christmas Parade, sponsored by the J.C.'s, at 4:30. Any parade questions can go to our own councilwoman, Wiseman. Also, the Human Relations Commission, we've been receiving several interested applications, so we will likely do some appointments at the December Administration Committee meeting. We had a ribbon cutting for Nichols Career Center, did the Greenway Arch, the artistic metal work on McCarty Street, just north of Simonsen, so if you haven't seen the amazing talent of the Nichols Career Center students, be sure to check that out. We also had a ribbon cutting for the new tennis courts at Lincoln University on Lafayette, and we played tennis. In fact, this was the first tennis ball to be hit on the new courts officially, and it's autographed, and I was one of them that actually got out there with a tennis racket, so if anybody wants to play me in tennis, I still can play, so if anybody wants to go out there. But the courts are incredible, it's an amazing partnership between the city, Parks and Recreation, and the U.S. Tennis Association, so very exciting to see the new tennis courts, they look fantastic. We also had a ribbon cutting for Capitol Avenue Streetscape completion, and that was last week, and that is fabulous. I know city staff has done an amazing job on all of the improvements, thank you to our public works and our planning departments for working so hard on that. That was a great joint city-county partnership project, and it looks fabulous. If you haven't driven through there at night, the lights are amazing. During the day, two-thirds of the trees have been planted, the other third will be planted in the spring, but it's really coming right along. A couple of other announcements, I had the honor to attend the Marine Corps Ball about a week ago, and Marine Rocky Sickman was there, he was the guest of honor, and he was a Marine that was held hostage in Iran in 1979 for 444 days as a hostage, and listening to his story of perseverance and being able to still get through after being held for 444 days was really inspiring, and hearing his really positive thinking and how he was able to get through that, and now lives in St. Louis with his wife and family, but he was, it was great to hear his story and appreciate what all of our military go through, but it was nice having him here in Jefferson City. And my last announcement is the Power Hour Plunge for Special Olympics. If you haven't signed up yet, I will pass these around. You can go to somo.org-plungejeffcity, and of course, our own Chief Schofield, when you go to that website, you'll see his name on there, because he has already stepped up. And if you want to raise money, you can either be on my team, or you can put money in, anybody who raises $500, you get to plunge in downtown Jefferson City on December 6, which is a Wednesday at 4:30 p.m. in downtown Jefferson City. So this is exciting, because Special Olympics, of course, is building their Training for Life campus here in Jefferson City, so it's great to support Special Olympics, and this is the first time we've ever done a plunge of any kind in Jefferson City. So we're going to do something really unique and have a Power Hour Plunge. So Sheriff Wheeler is working it from the county, so I think the city can step it up. Councilman Graham?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to recommend that Councilman Rick Mahalovich represents the city council and do the Polar Plunge.
Do we have a second? And all in favor say aye. It is official.
Yep, so I think, thank you, Rick, for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah.
I think the speaker and the maker of that motion should join me, if I'm going to do it, you're going to do it.
All right, we'll see how much money we can raise to do that, so that's a deal. And those conclude my announcements, and do stay tuned, because by the end of the meeting, we're going to have an announcement about our United Way contribution as well. So any further announcements? Nobody, it's awful quiet after all that. Okay. Item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions, we don't have anyone signed up this evening. Item 10, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, bills introduced, 201792, Mrs. Donaldson?
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Acxiom Plastics LLC, consisting of the improvement and expansion of the company's existing manufacturing facility and the acquisition and installation of certain real property therein, authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Acxiom Plastics Project, Series 2017, in a principal amount not to exceed $26 million, to finance the costs of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents, and authorizing certain other actions in connections with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. Before I get started, I'd like to point out that representatives from the Chamber of Commerce are here, as our economic, economic development wing of city operations, Chamber has been highly involved in this project and may be able to answer project-specific questions better than I can. However, the ordinance that you have in front here does several things related to an industrial development project proposed by a company called Acxiom Plastics LLC. What this ordinance does, it makes certain required findings under Chapter 100 of the Missouri statutes, approves issuance of industrial development revenue bonds under Chapter 100, and approves certain tax abatement for Acxiom Plastics to incentivize and induce their proposed expansion project here in Jefferson City. Specifically, the proposed bill would provide partial, at 75%, property, personal property tax abatement for equipment for seven years, and partial, also at 75%, real property tax abatement on real estate on land that's occupied by the industrial development project for another 15, or sorry, for 15 years. So this ordinance also proves a series of documents that are necessary, drawn up by the city's bond council, to effectuate the tax abatement and issuance of the bonds. I would like to draw the attention to one particular item in the performance agreement. Acxiom Plastics has pledged that it would create a minimum of 75 jobs as part of their project, in order to, in order to, sorry, to induce the city to give, to give the tax abatement and issue the bonds. That's included within the, within the performance agreement, and representatives from Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council, will be at the next meeting to order, to answer any bond-specific questions that the council may have, and give a little bit more information. But at this time, I would be happy to attempt to explain this very complicated transaction to you, the best of my ability.
Thank you, and like Mr. Mollman stated, we do have some representatives here from the Chamber of Commerce, so thank you all for being here and your work on this project. Does council have any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I think I'd go ahead and like to hear from the chamber with regard to this, it's pretty exciting news for the city.
Sure, if you would like to come forward. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Missy Bono, and I'm with the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce, and to Councilman Mahalovich's point, this is very exciting news for Jefferson City. The Jefferson City Chamber started working with the company back in February, earlier this year, and it's been a very quick project that we have been working. Acxiom, they are a manufacturer, and they design, manufacture, and supply plastic bottles to, to a customer in Jefferson City, as well as customers in St. Louis and Kansas City, so therefore making it the right location for Jefferson City to be able to serve their customers. So just a little bit of background about the, about the company, they do have four facilities in the, in the U.S., Columbus, Ohio, Atlanta, Toronto, Canada, and Ontario, California, and so Jefferson City will be their fifth location, so we're very, very excited. Ryan did talk about the investment, so $26 million in real, real and personal property, and they purchased the spec building that the Chamber completed in 2007, and we, we built the spec building with the hopes that we would attract a company to Jefferson City, so it's done exactly what we wanted it to do, although it did take about 10 years, it was a very, very long-term investment, but as you guys know, the, the economy kind of tanked in '08, and so it's taken us a little bit longer, but still very, very excited about this project. So as Ryan stated, the jobs that they would be creating, 48 jobs in year one, and then up to 75 jobs in year three, and we do have clawbacks in the performance agreement that Ryan mentioned, that if they do not, if the company fails to create the jobs, or if they do not maintain the average wage of 15.69 an hour, then there will be repercussions and clawbacks on the incentive, and so it will be prorated, and there is, the clawbacks are outlined in the performance agreement. So they are in the middle of completing, actually, they have completed the 50,000-square-foot buildout of the spec building, and they have started on an additional 75,000 square feet in the industrial park, so they will, at the end of the project, have 125,000 square feet total in the industrial park. And as of last Thursday, which was five days ago, they have already hired 75 employees. So, you know, they were saying 75 in year three, they are already at that 75, and are just growing very, very rapidly. So again, very excited about this project. If you have any other additional questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, that is great news. Thank you, Mrs. Bono, any questions, council? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion on 92? Okay, thank you. Item 12, bills pending, we've already done number 87, 201788.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, establishing election dates for city offices for 2018.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you, this is the city's annual ordinance to set the general election and dates for city offices for the 2018 April general municipal election.
Any council discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2017-89.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $25,250 agreement with American Pride-Hauling LLC for the 1204 East High Street demolition project.
Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Mayor. This contract would assist with the demolition of 1204 East High Street, which is a residential building with community development block grant funds. River City Habitat for Humanity is the owner, and they intend to reconstruct the single-family house on the property and sold to a local income-eligible family.
Thank you. Any council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2017-90.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County, setting procedures for joint city and county capital improvement sales tax for the East High Street Improvements Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this bill and the following bill both are agreements with the county, and they both basically do a couple things, but they agree who the staff-level contact is for a city-county project. They estimate the funding contribution in the year that it would be needed, and then indicate that since the city's completing the projects, we follow city procedures, things of that nature, set up signs indicating city-county project, things like that. Basically, the first one, Agreement Number 90, deals with the East High Street Capital Improvement Project. That's basically a sidewalk project, but a lot of retaining walls on it, school crossings, that kind of thing. That project is estimated to go from Pine Street to Better, and has an estimated date of 2018, next summer, to build the project with an estimate at this point of about $1.7 million project in total, half from each entity.
Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2017-91.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with Piper Jaffray and Company for financial advisory services.
Whoops. Got a 90.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a resolution. An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County, setting procedures for joint city and county capital improvement sales tax for the high school road project.
Anything to add, Mr. Marash?
Just that this agreement is for a road adjacent to the new high school. It goes from Creek Trail to Mission Drives, typical city street with sidewalks and curb and gutter. The estimate is $1.5 million, and we had had those funds available in our CIP in 2019, again evenly split by the city and county.
Thank you. Any deliberation? Councilman Hesse?
Matt, just for clarity on this project, because this one's a little different than the East High. I think we are sort of, us in the county are contributing the $1.5 to the project. The school district and their construction of the new school, or the second high school is going to sort of be the project.
Yeah.
Whatever. And in this project in particular, we've kind of capped at $750, sort of. If the project were to cost more than the $750, would that come?
Yeah. This agreement is between the city and county anticipating we're going to do a road project out there. The next agreement, I think it does indicate that, you know, we anticipate doing another agreement with the school, which is yet to come between the school district and the city, for them to build that road, capping the funds, those kind of things. And so you're exactly right. But we anticipate that they would, at this point, build the road, and then it'd be reimbursed for the cost of it.
Okay.
Any further questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 13, nothing on the informal calendar. Item 14, resolutions, RS 2017-18.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending and adopting the citizen participation plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development programs.
Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Mayor. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development published a final rule at 24 CFR Part 5 regarding the grantee's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing. The affirmatively furthering fair housing is a legal requirement the federal grantees further the purpose of the Fair Housing Act. And as a part of the community development block grant obligation, the city of Jefferson is required to submit an assessment of furthering fair housing to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by April of 2018. So under this new rule, the citizen participation plan had to be revised to include the new affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements, in which the citizen participation plan addresses the participation, the access to meetings, information, and records, publishing the plan, public hearings, notice of hearings, public comments, technical assistance, complaints, and amendments. So there was a public hearing held on October 26th in this council chambers to discuss the changes to the plan, which was previously adopted back in 2003. There was a comment period accepted, in which no comments were received. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Is there a motion to take up 2017-18?
I'll move.
Second. Is there any further discussion, questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Resolution passes, RS 2017-19.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri, to enter an agreement with Piper Jaffray and Company for financial advisory services.
Mrs. Mueller?
Miller, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Piper Jaffray and Company has been contracted with the city since 2000 to provide financial advisory services. And we'd like to execute this agreement because their contract expired October 31st, 2016, and we would like for them to continue serving as a financial advisor to the city on bond issues.
Thank you, Mrs. Mueller. Is there a motion to take up this resolution?
I'll move. Second.
Any further discussion, questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 15, presentations from the gallery on other topics. I don't think anyone signed up, correct? Mrs. Donaldson? Okay. And item 16, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. And at this time, we'd like to touch on, and we know that Thanksgiving is coming up, but did you know that Thanksgiving is a peak day for home and cooking fires, followed by Christmas and Christmas Eve? So Chief Schofield is going to give us a presentation on that.
That's not my phone. That's the police chief's phone. But if you'll turn your attention to the screen, we will talk just briefly about some holiday preparedness in terms of fire safety. NFPA annually puts out information that talks about some of the risks to homes and businesses during the holiday season. Just some really quick statistics up there. Making sure that you do use electrical lights or decorations, that they are UL-listed, and that they are properly plugged in. You don't overload any circuits in your home. If you do choose to use a live Christmas tree, make sure that it is well-watered and in good shape. Once it does dry out, make sure to discard of it very quickly. Also, avoid candles, keeping them in close proximity to anything that would be flammable. That is probably one of the more likely scenarios we see in holiday fires. Finally, any sort of heating appliance, first time you use it, make sure that it's been serviced appropriately in working order before you fire it up for the first time in the year. So we also have, in addition to these recommendations, a very short video that we made a couple years ago that shows the danger of turkey fryer fires. And so I would caution you not to try this at home. In fact, sometimes we are hesitant to even show this because it does encourage people who may be more risk-prone. But we would say definitely do it outside. See the effects here. It'll start. And it actually goes into slow-mo. You can see too much oil inside. So we advise voters to be careful. Make sure you know what to do. And the instructions. We posted this on our Facebook page as well. For anybody else who would like to see the video. The last time we posted that, we got about 30,000 hits. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just want to say thank you for answering Councilman Henry's question earlier about can he deep-fry frozen turkey. He asked me that earlier, so. Councilman Henry, no, you cannot deep-fry a frozen turkey.
Actually, I was going to say, you're the one that does that. In real life, not me.
Fortunately, we do have very good response time, and we will respond quickly to your fire, should you need us.
Well, Chief Schofield, thank you for that. And I've asked that you post and share that so that we can also share that video and show people the importance of really being cautious when they are with their families and celebrating, especially those around the council table here. But I came back in as Mayor Snow White because I want to touch on the United Way. So we have a special announcement that, if you didn't hear about their big announcement, that United Way raised over $2 million this year in their campaign, $2,730,000 to be exact. Thank you to the generosity of Jefferson City. And I also want to touch on the city of Jefferson and the city's role in what the city raised. The city raised approximately $20,000 from the city employees. So that is fantastic. The theme was Disney, if you can dream it, you can do it, which is why I'm here as this. And I should have asked Carlos, because you dressed up as... Remind me. There are pictures.
Let me guess, one of the seven dwarfs.
Well, no comment on Grumpy. But I do want to thank the employee committee that worked so hard.
Here comes Larry. Here comes Larry Henry. Larry! Larry! Councilman Henry!
We did have a bet that if the city council, unfortunately, if we had 100% participation of giving by the city council, that Steve Cole would dress up. And I see you decided not to dress up. You were supposed to dress up, Steve. So... We have this here for a reason, by the way. So I want to thank our committee for the city, which was chaired by Britt Smith, Angie Tobin, Kay Stoffer, Amy Schrader, Katrina Williams, Brenda Wonderlick, and Jennifer Sekanek, and all of those within the city that chose to give... I don't know if I want to get a selfie with that. Oh, goodness. So I think the council decided they want their money back, or maybe we need to give more money to just get him out of here. You're close. Okay. So should we get... Gail, do you want to come up and get a...
Hold on, Gail. Get a selfie with the mayor. You don't get out of your net. That's easy, honestly. So, all right. Counsel? It's much of beauty in the beast here, isn't it, everybody? So thank you to counsel for all giving 100% giving to United Way.
Big applause.
Big applause. All right.
Steve ought to wear that more often.
Is that real? Okay.
Where's Steve at? Supposed to be rehearsing.
Get a selfie. You don't look too far. I hope you don't break a camera.
Almost.
Great outfit.
Yeah, you are moving.
Come on, come on, guys. Come on, come on, come on.
Perfect. Perfect. You mean to adjourn?
Now I think I'm trying to adjourn.
Check it out. Check it out.
All right. So thank you again. The bet was if we had 100% council participation in giving, that Steve Cole would dress up. And so... That's about as good as it gets tonight. So... Okay. Any new business? Nope. Any unfinished business? Motion to adjourn?
Sommo.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.